Board meeting. Uh, remote participation Zoom for Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022. I call it toward or at uh, two oh three. And the first thing I must do is read the statement in accordance with Governor Baker's COVID-19 executive order regarding the open meeting law and remote participation votes will be taken through roll call. Okay, very good. Take me a second. You said new computer. Okay, I guess uh, I hand it over to you, Ted, unless Tracy has anything she wants to.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you all. Actually, I also have a new computer. I dropped mine last week when I was on vacation and it didn't work anymore. They crushed the recharging port. So I'm getting used to my computer as well. It's been a few days of agony, but I think I think I finally got things under control.
Alright.
So, yeah.
Right. What else is on here besides you and me?
Okay, actually, I probably should call roll call. Um, I call the several present Les Goodrich.
Present.
Uh, Tim, uh, but let's go with.
Yep.
President. Ward. He's in. Yeah. Tracy Murphy.
I'm here.
Yeah, want.
I'm here.
And Nicole Roberts.
I'm here.
All the attendees at the moment. Now, please, Ted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, so I've been busy the last few weeks putting together some amendments to the zoning and finishing up the design guidelines. Taking a step back for a second here. As you know, as we started this process, what the first thing we did was evaluate the whole bylaw, come up with some series of recommendations and suggestions for amendments that we might want to take. Also, we did the what used to be the zoning by law appendices, which was a series of sort of, you know, guidelines and suggestions and sort of illustrative examples of things that we would want to see in the town. And we've basically converted that into a full series of design guidelines. And the design guidelines will be included into the planning board rules and regulations for site plans and site developments, which has been on the books for a number of years. And I think last was amended in 2008. But there's already a section in the in the in the rules and regulations that section four for design regulations, but design guidelines. But currently, there's not much in there. So essentially, what we're doing is we're going to replace um what's there now with these new design guidelines that we've been working with. I've been sending out to you over the last month. One of the things I I'm working on in terms of adjustments is the section four and section five of the design guidelines. They had some dimensional standards in there that were not intended to be there. We're not changing any of the dimensional standards in the zoning bylaw at this point. So what I did is I backed those out and I reconfigured section four and seven and section five in turn uh that involving residential development as well as commercial, industrial, mixed use development guidelines. And so I'll be sending that out tomorrow, maybe tonight, actually. So you can take a look at those revised sections. The other thing in terms of the design guidelines is we are eliminating 6.0, which are the sign design guidelines. Now that we're updating the zoning bylaw sign regulations, there's no need to have those now uh in the in the design guidelines. And also, there's some language to in terms of quality of signs, the placement of signs that are already in the design guidelines for residential development as well as commercial, industrial, mixed use development. So we don't want to repeat what we're already doing in the zoning bylaw. So that process is underway. The design guidelines are in pretty good shape. That's I think everyone's been taking a look at that over the last couple of weeks. And like I said, I'll be sending out some updated versions of section four and section five this week. So our focus really today and over the last few weeks is is two role two two parts of the zoning regulations, Article Five Use Regulations and Article Nine Sign Regulations. So as I was starting to put together the 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 new use regulations, the table of use and all of the standards, performance standards that are already in that section. I decided that was probably best to incorporate some of the sections that are in Article Six that talk about different types of uses and, you know, really sort of belong all together in in one article. So I've gathered in some of those sections and created Article Five. And then Article Six is still in place, but it's only specifically for certain things that aren't so much related to to land use. And then again, the sign regulations are what we are also putting together. So in terms of in terms of Article Five, um, I'm hoping everyone's had a chance to read it, look at the new table of use. Basically, what we've done is we've we've broken down the table into different categories for everything from residential lodging, different forms of commercial development, commercial uses, industrial and agricultural uses. And we're incorporating a lot of new tech, you know, terms and and phrases and uses that, you know, we didn't have in place, you know, 15, 20 years ago. Things like microbreweries and that sort of thing are all sort of new in zoning regulations. And so we've incorporated sort of the best practices that we see in other places in terms of the category of uses. So we've broken that all down and we've identified it as you normally do by a different zoning district. And then I added this other this new zoning district, which is the downtown center, which I haven't finished writing up yet, but that would replace the planned development or it would basically become a separate zoning district from the planned development and have standards in and of itself, as well as uses that would be allowed by right or by special permit. The other major change is that we created a series of performing great performance criteria. So for all these different categories and a number of the uses that are in those categories from residential lodging, commercial industrial and agricultural, you'll see specific performance standards that basically say that if you're going to the planning board for a site plan review, or if you're going to the planning board or the zoning board for a special permit, you have to achieve X, Y, and Z performance criteria. So essentially, what it does is make sure that you get a good quality development or or use. But it also helps the board in their review process when an applicant comes before them with a new with a new site plan. So it's it's really meant to help sort of staff as well as the planning board. Make sure that they're answering, asking the right questions for different types of uses and that they're talking to the applicant about some of the things that really need to be addressed in order for it to be successful, in order for it to be, you know, consistent with, you know, compatible with the surrounding businesses and residential areas. So the other thing that we've incorporated into Article Five now is accessory uses, which used to be in Article Six. We want to basically put the whole package of uses under one article. So the Article Six now basically includes nonconforming uses, mobile home parks, wireless communication facilities, adult entertainment, wind energy and solar energy and accessory uses, parking for heavy vehicles, home-based businesses, access accessory dwelling units, swimming pools, those are all being integrated into Article Five under the use regulations. So that's that's where we are with the with the with the use regulations in Article Five and Article Six. In terms of the sign regulations, we're basically replacing what's already there. We've identified new purpose statement, a site plan and review process with certain criteria specific to, you know, different types of signs. We have standards for illumination. We have uh placements standards, and we have very specific and in a broad range of different types of permanent accessory signs as well as permanent principal signs. So for example, you see on a top table there, we're allowing A frames in certain districts, you know, primarily the downtown district and the PD district, display cases for businesses, directory signs and some other accessory use signs. And then for permanent signs, we have everything from, you know, your typical ground sign or freestanding sign to bracket signs and blade signs, marquees, murals, just all that, you know, all the different potential types of signs you might see whether you're in the industrial district or whether you're in, you know, downtown. We basically put together a full package of of design standards in zoning regulations for each one of these signs. So let's go through these really quickly, you know, sandwich board signs or their temporary signs that people put out, you know, to advertise, you know, you know, lunch specials or what have you. So we have, you know, pretty detailed standards where they go. They can interfere with the flow of pedestrian movement. They have to be close to to the to the doorway. Then there are case display cases, things like you would do for like a restaurant might have a menu out there on the wall, for example. These are sort of accessory signs, but you know, they're important to businesses in terms of attracting customers. Directional signs to get people to the parking and so forth, entrances, directory signs for, you know, businesses that are in the building have standards for that. Um, that's a display case. Again, we've already covered that. Then we have freestanding signs and they're different standards for different districts, obviously, in industrial district or commercial, some of the commercial highway districts, there would be larger signs. And then in the other districts, yeah, in the downtown district and the PD district, you might see smaller scale signs. And they and they also are allowed by special permit in the residential districts. But again, you know, they have to be small and discreet. Monument signs, monument signs are great for business parks and for commercial highway and industrial uses. So we've got those that that weren't allowed before. Bracket signs are basically smaller versions of the freestanding signs, which might have for a home occupation or areas which are sort of mixed between residential and commercial. You might when you might see a bracket sign for, you know, CPA or a lawyer or what have you, sort of whole occupation. And then for the larger signs, things like a marquee, there's a theater in the downtown area or even an old theater that could be renovated for new use, you would be able to use that marquee sign, renovate it and make it part of the sort of the the character of downtown. Art murals, I know art murals aren't allowed today in Winchita, but boy, I'll tell you, they make a big difference when you have blank walls and you've got good artists because it really sort of livens up areas, particularly downtown area. Blade signs or projecting signs, those are really important in downtowns because along with the vertical banner signs, because if you're coming out of a parking lot and you look up and down the street, the projecting signs allow you to see what's up there in a block or two ahead. So you can see, you can really get see what's up there and, you know, maybe a restaurant that you might be interested, you might not see that if it was just simply a wall sign. So it's really important in downtowns to have good projecting signs as well as wall signs, but projecting size, they really grab the attention of people walking up and down the sidewalk as well as people in their cars. So and I'm, you know, I've been a downtown business improvement district director and I keep, you know, working with local businesses to make sure they understand how important these projecting signs are to business. Standards for wall signs and for window signs, window signs are also good. They're well done. They can really, you know, draw attention to people that are walking by. Wall signs should be high quality, not oversized. Most of the standards here really discourage internal illumination. We really want to see, you know, well lit signs, you know, that are exteriorly lit. Oning signs as well as onings. And then temporary signs. So temporary signs would be things like street banners, temporary window signs, you know, for example, grocery stores, they put up specials and that sort of thing. And even what's becoming even more popular now is projected image signs. So you see the lower images here where they basically at nighttime, they light up a building with a projector, you know, to project different images on it. And it's really a a fun thing to to see, especially there's there's an event going on downtown or some other part of the community. And then we have a series of specifically prohibited signs. I don't know if you see these in Wichita, then we I see them all the time in other communities. But things like the balloon signs, the air activated graphics, the ones that flop up and down. The feather signs are really popular. Dunkin' Donuts really loves those things. People signs, people spinning the signs, advertising murals, that's different than a standard mural, which is a, you know, painted piece of art, you know, that we don't want large advertisements on the sides of these buildings. Portable message signs and vehicle signs, people that park their vehicles on the side of the road and advertise. And then the last thing I've been working on and hopefully get that out in next week or so is the downtown center and neighborhood district. I'm working on the zoning requirements for that now. That would be a new district under Article 4.8. And hopefully I can get that out to you hopefully by the end of next week. So that's where we are on the signs and the use regulations. Now I have all these things. If you want to talk specifically about closes and show.
So Ted, is it, are we like, are the members or anybody else able to ask you specific questions about different things actually in in the draw? Okay, I just wanted.
I just wanted to, I just, I just wanted to just give you sort of the highlights of where we are and to give you a summary of what we're doing in those different sections. But yeah, I have both sections, a sign section as well as the use section open up, including the table. So yeah, let's, we can go through it if people have specific questions or.
Do we want to start with Article Five?
Sure.
I don't know who wants to start. They've all had, I sent these out, so everybody's had them for a couple of weeks to go through and make notes and so if anybody wants to start.
No. Let me see. Can I share my screen still? Can everyone still see that?
Yep, yep.
So in order to change it to like the use table, do I have to stop share first and redo it?
You might have to.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I think I have to do that. It makes going back and forth a little more complicated.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's alright. Yeah, so this is the.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, this is a use table right here. So you can see we, you know, we we broke things down by, you know, residential and in subsections, residential household living, which would be your typical single family home, duplexes, anything where you're you're living in individual units. And then there's group living where you might be in a dormitory or shelter or a boarding house, nursing home, that sort of thing.
So a quick question I wanted to ask is overall, there's not a lot of changes to what's existing. Is that correct? You know, like.
I tried, I, there's a lot more categories.
Correct.
But I tried to match it up the best I could to what was allowed in different districts.
Okay, and that's what I, and that's, that was the question I had, that I I didn't see that there was a lot of changes in the in the actual permissions, yes and no. On this section, though, if if it's okay with the chair, can I ask a question before we go too far?
Go right ahead. I just lost my screen, so I can't see anything. Keep moving forward.
Okay.
I feel for you, guy. I'm I'm getting used to my computer, too.
I had a question on this, what the difference between a Y and a P?
So Y is permitted by rights and they don't, they need, they don't need to go to the planning board. So if you're doing a single family home, you have to come into your office, they need to get a permit or the building inspector, but they don't have to go before the planning board. A P would be, it's a, it's a permitted use, but you have to go to the planning board.
For the site.
The PB is you have to go to the planning board for special permit.
Permit, yeah.
And then the BA is a special permit by the Board of Appeals.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Okay.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Good question. And when this thing's all done, that will have a reference, right, like an index saying Y is this, B is this, B is this, right?
I think it says it.
Somewhere here, but I I can't find it right now. I'm trying to get this stuff.
I saw it.
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Almost if it's if you're going to have a key so that people can know what those letters mean.
Oh, there is. It's in the beginning. Yeah.
Yeah, right in the beginning, 5.3.4.
Yeah.
I thought I saw it, but I wasn't, you know.
Yes.
Oh, and I missed the Y. Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, it's in there. I mean, I can switch over to the text if you want, but.
No, that's fine. I missed it. So sorry about that.
And then over to the right here, the performance standards, and that also references back to the bylaw, Article Five, and it tells you which, you know, for like a fast food restaurant, what are the standards that are specific to that use? And 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 a number of other uses. So again, the idea there is it's trying to provide some criteria that the board can use and that staff can use to fully evaluate different uses in site plans.
So in terms of the accessory uses, I think it's a great idea having it all in one place.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing that I think we run into sometimes, especially lately, is that we've are mixed use. We, these are all principal uses until we get down to the accessory section. And we have a lot of people that want to do businesses or like a mixed use type of thing. I'll use an example. We had somebody call. They wanted to build a house on a lot. And then they also wanted to build a barn for a wedding venue.
Mm hmm.
So I put that in this scenario, you know, this, I use this as an example, and I'm trying to figure out if that would be allowed by what we have in front of us right now. Because we get a, okay, so a home based business with employee.
Well, do they have employees there? I mean, that's.
I'm sure, I'm sure they would, like a wedding venue. So they'll have, okay, all right.
Yeah.
We get a lot of that. We get, we get a lot of like accessory business, like a petting zoo. Somebody has a farm. They want to have a petting zoo. And the way, and the way our zoning is written right now, that wouldn't be allowed. But but if we can, a home based businesses with employee, okay.
So so that's a, I think that's why two things, I think, it's a home based business. So you need a permit for that if you're going to actually invite people over and you got to make sure you have enough room for parking and that's the, that's the thing. And then it's a commercial building. It's it's an accessory building as well. So let's see.
I think what my, I guess what my question, maybe my question's more for the board. We see a lot of requests for that type of business. And, you know, how does the board feel about allowing more of that? Um, you know, I mean, I think, you know, special permits give us some oversight to mitigate any of the adverse impacts they may have. But it's not really an unreasonable request if somebody has 30 acres and they want to build a barn and they want to have a wedding venue.
Yeah.
You know, why can't we allow things like that? So.
I, to answer your question, I see nothing wrong with it. As long as they have the acreage to do it with, I mean, can't destroy uh, say five acres of land or something like that. I don't think that would be.
Yeah. And that's what the, and that's what the, and that's what the performance standards are all about is that, yeah, you've got, you know, it, you know, we did something like a venue for weddings and stuff like that. And I'm there's nothing specific in there. We may want to sort of reconfigure one of these accessory commercial uses to make it clear that that's what the permitted uses. You'd want to have performance standards in there. So when the when the board's looking at it, they can say, all right, we got to worry about parking, we got to worry about traffic, we're going to have access, we got to worry about screening, and those would be part of the performance standards that you would use in order to determine whether it was a suitable site, an adequate site for a venue of that size or 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 type. So that's if that's, if that's something specific that we want to put in there, I can, I can make some adjustments for that.
How does the board feel about that?
Well, my feeling is still, like you said, you've got to have, got to have all this area, you've got to have enough pocket, you've got to have enough area, enough land to build this thing.
Well, the good, the good thing is, is your special permit process will really allow you to scrutinize all that, you know what I mean? And and
Right.
So, but right now, that request would be problematic the way our zoning is written.
Yeah. And that's mostly in the residential districts where that's happening? Because you have, you know, big firehouses.
Yeah, yeah, actually, it is pretty much the, it's pretty much the residential districts because it's sort of a, it's sort of an accessory use and our accessory uses are very they're kind of very restrictive because they're listed. And if it's not, and if it's not listed, it's like, that's why I did like your accessory use with with an employee or employees.
Right, right.
But we even have people that want to do a commercial kennel at their house. And we not have a provision that would allow that to happen unless it was a home, unless we considered it a home based business, which technically it it may not be. So.
Right, right.
So, you know, and especially I'm, you know, and I, I don't know, Ted, if you, you could offer a comment on this. Post pandemic, we're seeing a lot of people that want to do things out of their home or or, you know, we see a lot of this activity. And and, you know, I really, I don't think we want to restrict it, but at the same time, we don't want to have a free for all.
Right, right. You got to protect the neighborhood. You got to make sure that it's not affecting the neighborhood. Right.
Correct. So.
Well, let's, let's think about that. I mean, you know better than I. What are the possible, what have you seen come in and what are the possibility you think of people that have been talking about doing different things? And we can make these adjustments to the home based businesses to allow, you know, a certain level of of breadth of use. And we'll just have to make sure we have good standards and make sure the neighborhood's not impacted by it.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. So wedding, like a wedding venue or like a, you know, some sort of public assembly venue, that's something we should probably clarify here because it's, you know, it's questionable whether, you know, you could use one of these terms to to cover that. So I think we would want to add that.
Yeah, I think, I think we need it because we've seen it. We've seen it more than once.
Yeah, I mean, like a home based business with an employee, that could be like a like an accountant during tax season, you know, they need some help. So they got someone on board to help them during that time. But I think that what you're talking about is something a little bit bigger because they got to have to, you know, bring in caterers and music and all that stuff. So it's potentially.
And then.
I don't, I don't think that's a home based business, bro.
No, because in our, in the way that the home based business is written, it primarily has to, you know, there's a certain percentage of the actual home, certain, certain square foot of of the home that it can take up. And this, that's not what this is. That's not what this is. This is a whole accessory structure.
Right.
It's a business.
It's a business, wow. It's like a small conference center almost.
I mean, I, you know, I'd like to hear from the board. I mean, is that a type of business you want to allow in town or you know, or or not? We, I do have to say, we get a lot of, a lot of calls on that type of thing.
I'm not against it. Uh, because I, you know, I, we, it's all for everybody to do a kind of business. I don't want anybody to try to do business. I'm just looking at what you're saying. That's not a home, that's not a home based business. So does it go in a residential area, a neighborhood residential area or this highway commercial or how do we really determine all this? What do, what do we do? I don't want, I don't want to cause problems in our neighborhood with neighbors. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, if you look at our our zoning map, I mean, a majority of Winchita, a good portion of it is made up of our 80. And I think, like Tracy said, ever since the pandemic, people are getting very creative with ideas and and, you know, broadening what they want to do. And I think we need to make provisions to kind of look at, I mean, we do site plan and you know, we look at other things besides just saying, oh, no, that's allowed, just kind of having a provision. So people might be able to do that. And Winchita.
people might be able to do that. And Winchigan will be able to grow and have more jobs and have more of a population. Um, so I think that that is important, cause people are getting very creative with some of their ideas.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, let's think about that one. What other, what other accessory businesses would we might see in the R eighty, R forty?
Sure.
So that we would wanna add that to this list.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Les that that is not a home based business.
No.
Business. Um, so I don't know how you're gonna deal with that.
Well, it's, it's, you know, it's, if, if they got a lot of land, you know, and they've got an old barn to convert into a, you know, a venue for weddings. And it's, you know, it's well buffered from any of the neighbors. I think that's all has to be sort of factored into the decision by the planning board, just, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't think it should be considered a home based business. There might be something else that could go under, but.
But it would still be an accessory, like a, an, a commercial, because there would be a home, there'd be a home on the, um, property.
And that would be the, that would be one of the criteria. It's gotta be a single family house or a duplex or whatever, and people are living there. Uh, you know, every day, a full time basis. And then the weekends they have, they rent it out for as a, as a wedding venue or something like that.
Yeah. And how would it affect the neighbors? Uh, because that's, a wedding is a loud event.
Right, right. It definitely can't be, it definitely would have to be a special permit. And you'd have to, and you'd have to, I don't know if there's a minimum acreage or, or something. I, I think it's something for everybody to think about. And, and who knows? Maybe you, maybe you wanna say no, but we get a lot of requests for people to do businesses in conjunction with their, where they live.
Yeah.
And I, I understand that, but I just don't think something that big, you know, you got a lot of people, fifty six, eighty people, hundred people, and they're, and there's gonna be drinking and all that kinda stuff. You're in a neighborhood that.
Yeah. And, and, and I probably shouldn't have used that as an example, cause we have like, we have a lot of, like, um, a dog, a dog, a commercial dog groomer.
Yeah, she wanted to groom. Yeah.
Wanted to groom. If a by hour bylaws, that's not, that's not allowed. It's a commercial. It doesn't take up any of the existing dwelling. It would, it would have been in a separate. So there's just things like that, that I, I just would let, I asked the board to think about. Maybe we don't wanna allow it. You know, maybe you guys, maybe you don't, but that's something I really, it's something we see uh, time and time again.
That's, you know, a, a groomer, or a dog groomer, or something like that. I mean, as long as it's one on one, you don't have six dogs there fucking all the time. You know, mostly the groomers have appointments, like, you know, a hairdresser or anything like that. Bring the dog in at two o'clock in the afternoon. You pick the dog up at three or what, whatever.
Mike, and I think the way that Ted has the home based business with an employee, she, that this particular person probably would fall under that and would be fine.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Our exist, our existing zoning, it was, it just doesn't allow for an accessory commercial use.
Right. And most of them are by special permanent, especially in the residential districts. Most of them are by special permit anyways.
And that's.
Now, if you get, you know, like, if you look at this, a home based business with one employee, you know, that's a, that's a planning board special permit with criteria to, to look at. So.
Yeah.
Um, we would just have to think about whether we wanted to add something that could potentially be more of an impact, like a, like a wedding venue. Do we, where do we draw, draw the line as far as the size and scale? But it could, I mean, it could fit right in if it's a big, you know, an old farm or something where there's lots of land and there's few neighbors, but.
Which is kinda the case in this particular case. I think that, I think there's like thirty acres, but.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
But anyways.
Yeah. And, and to, you know, the planning board would have, you know, that's why they go before the planning board. So you could put these stipulations in place. You could look to see what they have. So I think really it's a case by case basis. Wouldn't you agree, Trace?
Yeah, but the only thing is you can't really write zoning for a case by case. You either allow it by special permit or you don't. And, I mean, you could put minimum, you know, your lot size, if you're in the residential area, your lot size has to be a minimum. If you're gonna consider a large scale commercial. Um, I don't know. It's just something the board, board members are gonna have to think about it. And then when we meet again, really hash it out.
Yeah.
And then, you know, of course, during the public hearing, townspeople, you know, take some input from the townspeople as well.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep.
And let's see. Anybody else have some notes they wanna talk about, or?
I've got, I've got a couple. In, just on, on five, I got some, I got some on nine too, but, uh, on five, on five thirteen, five thirteen point six, marijuana one. Uh, we have to write in, yeah, now we will it, limited to three. Uh, details to us.
Five thirteen point six?
Great. Uh, six. Five thirteen point six.
Leslie, looking at the text or you looking at the table?
I'm looking at the, your, your draft.
The text. Okay. Let me back out of this for a sec. So five, what now? Five?
Five, five thirteen point six.
Okay. Let's see.
It says on it, so C section six twelve was the zoning bylaw, but it doesn't really specify what we have in there.
Wrong one. Not easy to share. Let's see.
Well, yeah, we'd all be wiped out right now.
All right. I think that's it. Can you guys see this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So let me go down here. Five thirteen. So you can see, these are all the performance standards. So a conference center, uh, has to be part of a hotel or mixed use building, operations, six AM, one, later to midnight. So that there's lots of these standards that the planning board can use when they're evaluating different, uh, projects. So. Fifteen thirteen. Or five thirteen six?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, this is just referring, yeah, the marijuana related uses. That's just referring it to this, the bylaw that's already on the books in section six. I didn't, I didn't touch that one. I know better than to touch marijuana by law.
I just, I just.
Thank you.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just making a reference to the, uh, because marijuana related uses is on the table of use. I just wanted to make a reference to where the specific standards were.
All right. Well, I'll agree with you there. Okay. I thought it was. Uh, five fourteen one, this is the next one down.
Yep.
This is, uh, bombing the subject wall that have rules and animals ahead. Uh, can we limit that to, uh, like, uh, six chickens in our eighty zone?
Six in an R eighty?
That's, that's, I'm sorry. In, in a residential area, downtown residential area.
R ten.
Well, this is, this is a real farm. So you, you talking about accessory uses, accessory like hen houses and stuff like that in residential districts?
We got a lot of people in town here that got chickens now, okay? And the thing is, uh, I ran into this myself, okay?
Yeah.
We have no roosters in here. I saw it saying no roosters, which I, I, only place the rooster walks on a farm. That, not in, not in a, not in a residential area. And, uh, but it also doesn't put, it just says animals ahead of poultry shall not exceed one animal ahead for a thousand square feet. Okay? The thing is, when you're, you're somewhere in here, and it does say, it did say chickens, and I know what you mean.
Yeah, that's, as an accessory use, there's a chicken thing too. Yeah. This is for farms.
It also, how about ducks?
Ducks?
Yeah.
Birds?
Yeah.
Hmm.
I ran into this. Okay, I ran into this. So I'm just running into the, into the problems that I had. And the thing came out that you're not supposed to have more than six chickens in a, in a downtown area. That's what I was told. And.
Okay.
And no roosters and ducks, you know, that's supposed to be really kept when you're on land, not in it, in somebody else's yard.
All right. So you're talking about people who own a house and they have, they have a hen house or they have.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Downtown, downtown, let's say, I don't know, you're not familiar with the, with the area, but, you know, just in the downtown area.
Yeah.
On street or say from south off. Okay.
Can I, can I ask you, is everyone, can everyone see what I'm seeing, which is accessory buildings and uses?
No.
No.
Performance criteria for.
Okay, let me stop sharing for a second. We go back. Find it. Can you see it now? No? All right, share screen. Think this is it here. Nope, that's the wrong one. Hang on. Sorry.
Don't worry.
All right. Stop sharing. All right. So stop sharing. Now share my screen. Which one is it? That's part B. Share. Now?
Totally.
Yep.
Part, part two?
Yes, yep.
Sorry, my dog was somewhere. Um, okay, so accessory building in uses, accessory residential. Let's see, lodging.
I saw, uh.
Commercial uses.
I saw, um.
Merchandise.
Yeah, it was in like.
Accessory agricultural. Okay, so this is accessory. So agriculture, that's bees.
And then agriculture.
Raising of birds. So chickens would be included in that. I don't know if I, I could put ducks in there. I, I could domestic ducks, get the chickens in there. Roosters are prohibited uh, in a residential district.
And I, yeah, you got, right there, Maxwell, six hens, which is fine.
Yeah. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
That's, that's what I was, yeah, I, I had written this down as I was going through before, and I didn't see it, but, uh, I, I did see it after that, but I wanted to just bring it up that there's not, it's the thing, it's, uh, there's no ducks in there.
Okay.
I don't. How do we, how do we make sure, uh, eliminate this so that people keep these animals on their own block?
That's your animal.
That's, yeah, yeah, that's border health.
You're going on one forty. No, just one twenty. There's a woman down there that has chickens. And they're, they're almost on the road all the time. They, for some reason, they know better to go into the road. But, you know.
That's animal control, though. They would have to.
Or border, border health as well, yeah.
Or, or border health, correct. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I, but I can add ducks to this list.
It's a lot of people have, especially, you know, what happens is that at, uh, Easter time, people buy their kids chickens and ducks, you know? You know, and they end up with. I'm just saying, I'm just reaching out there, what, what could happen?
Yeah. Yeah. Do you think this is, do you think this is sufficient, though? I mean, if it, it's a matter of enforcement, that's, that's an issue on every one of these, these, you know, bylaws. Um, but if you think this, 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 uh, this section is sufficient, at least the way it's written.
I think, I, I think, I think so. I think it's just, you know, we just, it would have to be eleven, you know? How do you change that to something else? You know, I mean, kinda hard to get, okay, I mean, chickens or just, it just sucks or? I don't know.
I, I. Can I pipe up on this?
This, this is just.
We, we gotta, we gotta be very careful with how we word this, because you gotta look at what is in the actual border health documents related to the farm animal use in a, uh, R ten area, or however we have the label, because we don't want what we're writing in here to conflict with anything that's in any border health policies, cause then obviously one's gonna have to trump the other. So we wanna, we wanna, I think the best thing is to consult Jim and see what we have in the border health policy. I mean, I'd have to go physically look it up. I mean, being on the board of health and everything, I don't know it off the top of my head, but this was something that was brought up in one of the recent meetings, uh, as a complaint that was brought to the board.
Yeah. We can, we can look that up, Garrett, um, because we have had a lot of complaints. But all of our complaints, all of the complaints typically come from the R ten area. So, so that comes to my next comment about this is we have people that live in the R eighty who have, you know, two, eighty thousand square foot lots, two, you know, two acres. Do we want the same, um, restrictions on them that we do on an R ten?
I don't think that that's necessary. I mean, I live in R eighty and I have, you know, I originally had twelve, uh, two acres. Now we have twelve acres. I mean, so I understand that I'm in a different situation, but.
Right.
You know, having two acres of land is something that, you know, if you wanna have chickens or you wanna have some type of, you know, domestic, you know, animal that's gonna provide you food, like eggs and things like that. I, I don't, you know, we're a farming community. It's hard to sit back and restrict these, you know, uh, or put these restrictions on these residents who moved here to Wichita and to be part of a farming community and not have to deal with this restriction.
I don't, I don't think two acres, we have to do this on two acres, I don't think. I think that's, it'd be plenty of land to carry this stuff. But when you gotta, you know, ten thousand square foot area.
I'll tell you, most of our, most of our complaints come from the R ten area.
Yeah. Well, it's, it, it, in, in, so there's a, the eighty, the forty, and the ten, they're all allowed uh, this use by, um, special permit from the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
So either, either way, you go whether you're in R eighty or R ten, you still have to get a special permit. Uh, you have to, so you still have to meet these criteria. So if you can change that if you want. You'd be thinking the R eighty, we should, by right or not, I, I don't know. It's up to you.
And how's the, does the board wanna, um, make a comment on that?
I, I would say, uh, maybe kept on a R ten lot. And, uh, then it goes on to say that, uh, health regulations may further limit the number. I, I don't know. Garrett probably most knowledgeable on this. And maybe to get Jim's input, you know, before.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely will get him. I got it. I am myself a note.
Yeah, the way.
Sorry, go ahead.
The way I wrote it up, it's basically allowed by special permit in all three of the residential districts. So I don't know if we wanna change that or, or not. So it's.
I would, my personal thought on this one, that, you know, with taking me outside of the board, is I'd keep it to an R ten for any special restrictions and then leave the, you know, the, leave the, uh, R forty and R eighty, uh, out of it. And plus it's some major problems we can always revisit in the future. I mean, you could always throw something into this, as you know, uh, at the discretion of the border health, uh, the border health and the agent. I, I don't know where that implication would stand, but that might not be a bad statement either.
I'd like to see, um, this is again, just my opinion. I'd like to see the R eighty not really have to jump through a lot of hoops to have six hens and stuff. You know, I think that a lot of those homes are out on the, um, outer portions of the town. We do have a few R eighty that's pretty close to town, but. I mean, that's, you know, that's up to the board how you wanna do this.
Yeah, I mean, is it, is it really a hassle for the applicant to go to the board just to get a special permit under these criteria? I mean, I think they're pretty straightforward, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's a pain. Out of the odds, it's not, it's not easy.
Yeah, I mean, it's typically a sixty day process and, you know.
Is it really? Okay.
Yeah. So it's, it's a hoop that kinda, you know, for, for a, a right to farm community. Not that right to farming is this. This isn't that one that covers, but there's that misconception that we're a right to farm community. Why can't I have my chickens?
Okay, so.
I think Garrett had the right ideas. But go like that and have something in it that says, you know, leave it up to the, uh, border health and. Board of Health and, and, uh.
I, I don't know that the board, the board health gets involved until after it's permitted by the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, we would have to, we have to spell out what we want, and then. They're more of the regulatory, like the enforcement. So.
Jim's input would be good on this.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's the thing to do, is talk to the inspector, building inspector and the health, board health agent, and just see what they think we should do there.
Okay. I can do that.
I mean, right now, they're allowed, they're allowed, but you have to get a special permit, which slows things down, so.
And I have to tell you, almost nobody gets them, and then they try to go take them, and it, it's, it's a how, it's, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
So. I would talk to Jim.
Okay.
I got one other, I got another one, too. For you, and that's five twenty-two point seven, it's swimming pools.
Five twenty-two. Let me see, where am I? Let me stop sharing for a second. Really hard to go back and forth with these things, five twenty-two?
Five twenty-two, seven, uh, seven.
Accessory structures, oh, swimming pools.
Maybe that's.
Five twenty-two. This is, this is taken from, um, section six. I just moved over to section five. So, let's see, five twenty-two, what?
I had seven, but I don't guess the one right now.
Seven, yeah, swimming pools, fish ponds, yep.
Okay, you've got an above ground pool, it's gonna have a fence around it. Uh, no. It is situated in an in-ground swimming pool, and then above the pool, a four-foot fence, but. Four feet, uh, four feet or deeper. Need a fetch, can't.
Four feet or. So you're saying that, I think this came from your own bylaw, let's see, um. Situated in-ground swimming pool or above-ground swimming pool, four feet or more in depth. Two feet or closer. You say we don't need a, a fence running above ground pool? I think there's, I think you do need. That's, that's another question for the, the, you know, building inspector, there may be a state law about, um. Even if it's an above-ground pool, I know for.
Regulation, that if you have a pool that's four feet or more, you either have to have a fence, or you have to have a ladder that, uh, goes up.
Yeah.
Nicole, you, Nicole, you confirmed this with Jeff, the building inspector, didn't you?
Yes, Jeff said that most pools nowadays are forty-eight inches or above, and if it's forty-eight inches or above, it does not need. A fence around it, the only time, if it, like a butts a deck, it needs special alarms on the doors that exit out to that deck. In-ground pools, in-ground pools do need a fence around them.
They, now, an above-ground does need the ladder that goes up, though, correct?
Needs, it needs a locking ladder, yes, so, you know, nobody can enter in and, and get in your pool.
Okay, so, so we wanna change that to not require a fence around above-ground pools?
Yeah, as long as it's, it's forty-eight inches or above.
Which is what, which is what we're, which is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
I, I just, I think the language that it has to be, you know, secured with a ladder or something, you know, I think that's probably why. Cause this, Ted, you said this is what's in our by, bylaws right now.
That's what's, I think it is, I, maybe you wanna take this section and give it to your inspector and say, what is, what do we wanna do here?
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I do know that he, cause he told you, Nicole, didn't he, that he does make sure that they have a locking ladder and.
Yes, yep, yep, before he signs off on it, yep.
But he might be going by state law and not even reading the zoning, so we should make sure that they're consistent, I think.
That's, okay, Ted, I'll find that language from him and.
Okay, yeah.
Does anybody else have some notes on this, on article five? I've got a. Couple, but I want everybody to have a chance to.
I, I just wanna make one note here, we're talking about above-ground pool forty-eight inches with no fence height. Now, that is, uh, above the three feet that you need a fence around a deck. Around anything else, how do the two correspond? If you have a platform up there at forty-eight inches, which is four feet, and our state requirements are that you have a fence. At, and anything above a three foot or two and a half, I think it's a three foot height. If I'm not mistaken, I could be, many times.
You mean that the deck that, that goes into the above-ground pool?
No, whether, yeah, the deck that is an above-ground pool, I know that patio, we had four feet up, you had to have a three-foot fence. Now, this is a patio.
Yeah. Think you sort of get into it, so it's, so it's, it's.
Off the edge.
Yeah, you don't fall off the edge, right, right. I think the other issue is that they don't want, you know, young kids ro, you know, rambling into the yard and falling into the pool or climbing into the pool.
Oh, yeah, that's the other side of it, I'm just looking at that three-foot rule.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's building code, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, it is, I don't, is, is it three feet, or is it, I don't know exactly what it is, but, yeah.
Thirty inches or something.
Thirty inches.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I know when I was building the, you know, that was one of the main things. Can't remember, make it just short.
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
I have a couple, if no other member does, does any other member wanna ask some questions?
Uh, not on this section, I have one on the, uh, signs, but, uh, you go ahead, Tracy.
Okay. Five point one eight, five eighteen, it's just kinda more out of curiosity, you have off, off-site accessory parking must be located. Within six hundred and sixty feet of the principal use.
Are you on five point what now?
Five point one eight.
Five point one eight.
Right, yeah. And I was more curious where that number came from.
It's a, basically, it's a quarter mile.
Okay, perfect.
It's a, it's a comfortable walking distance.
Okay, perfect.
Once you get beyond that, people can, they will, they will walk as far, unless it's for, like, a public transit.
And then on page five. Is the page number easier, five point two one?
No, the, the number, the number's easier.
Okay, five point one seven.
Okay. Right here. Accessory lodging, yeah.
Yep, so under line two, um, parklets are installed. Parking lanes. That one I wondered?
But no, five point one seven is accessory lodging uses.
Okay, it's five point one eight, I apologize.
Oh, five point one eight.
Yeah, sorry about that, that was me. Five point one eight seven. You have, um.
Seven. Yeah, that, that would be like a, uh, you know, if you've got, uh, shared, uh, bicycles, you know, you got a bicycle station.
Yeah.
You may not have those, some, some towns, some rural towns are starting to get those, so I don't know that. Especially if you got a, if you got a bike trail, so like, I'm working in Pepperell, and they've got a really nice National River Rail Trail. And they, they've installed a, a, a bike share program.
Well, they have their shares, the, uh, their mass DOT has given out grants for parklets, too.
Right.
But, um, under section two here, under five point one eight point two. No, I think it's the other.
By the way, five point one eight point two.
Oh, God.
Oh, parklets.
Yes.
Parklets, yeah, five point one eight point eight.
So, see under number two, parklets are installed on parking lanes, you refer to town council, if you could refer to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So any, anywhere where you write town council, just Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And then anywhere that, like, under, in the next section, you refer to town ordinance. Ordinances, we refer to them as bylaws, I think it's in, uh, section one, right here. All town ordinances as an ancillary, uh, ancillary, yeah, right there.
Okay.
And then on the next page, um.
So, it's called town, town bylaws?
Correct, yep, town bylaws.
Okay.
And then on the next page, um, right here, the operator of the outdoor dining cafe may be granted. Through a, through a bylaw, we don't have a section of the bylaw that exists for, for that.
Okay, no, general codes, nothing.
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't have anything that would provide for that permission, so, um.
Okay.
But what you, so, so, I'm sorry.
Do you, do you allow parklets right now?
We, well, nobody's actually, we, we would, I think. But I think rather than referring to any section of the general codes, if you just take that line out. Because, because right now, when somebody asks permission to do something on town property. The town manager, um, usually addresses it, and if it's something big, he'll go to the Board of Selectmen for that.
Okay.
So, um.
Yeah, so this is actually, this is a, uh, outdoor cafe, so it's basically a si, seating on the sidewalk, public sidewalk. So in that case, the town manager would, he would take that, and he would get the Board of, uh, Selectmen to approve it, okay?
Correct.
Okay, so just.
So you can just strike out that last sentence.
I'll just make it B O S, right?
Yeah, yeah, or, and, yeah, and they can, um.
I'm trying.
To that authority, um. I think that was, yeah. In section five, that was all I had for my, for my notes.
Okay. Nicole, do you get anything?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, well, I mean, there's a lot here, I know this is, you know, you're probably overwhelmed with all of this stuff, so. Take your time, if you've got, you know, questions, comments, or things you think people might have a concern when we get to town meeting. Just give me a heads up, you know, and we can, we can talk about it, we can address it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, there's a lot to absorb in, you know, one meeting, obviously.
And, and that's another thing to the board, um, you know, we, we've got another meeting in a couple of weeks, and then. Today, before we do that, we should really decide on. A date for a public hearing, so that we can get these vetted, and I'd like to give a decent draft to the public, so that they have time to absorb it.
Yeah.
And then, and then, um, so, please send your comments in.
What, Tracy, what's the, the timeline again, what town, you have a date for town meeting?
The warrant closes on April fourth, but what I can, what I can do is I can, uh, reserve. When we make a determination on how many articles. I can reserve art, you know, three, three articles that are, you know, we can do, we can do article five as one. Town meeting warrant article, we can do article nine as one town meeting warrant article, or we can just do one. Article in all the zoning.
Yeah.
Um, you know, really up to the purview, that, you know, it's up to the board, and, and Ted, how you feel would be the best way to present this.
Um, right.
Again, it's a lot of information, you know, we, we want people to feel like they really. Understand the changes, although, really, there's not a lot of, a lot of substantive tra, changes, it's just a lot of the, um. The way it's being presented, it's a little bit.
Yeah.
Pudding things up.
Uh, yeah, and it's, it's making things clearer, too, which is great.
And it's adding the standards, the performance standards, and it'll help the, the board and the staff, so, the, the thing, though, is it's, it's, you know, it's not in and of itself, it's not. Article five, we're absorbing part of article six, we're adding new definitions that are new terms that aren't currently in. Uh, the table of use, that goes in section two, article two. Um, if we end up doing the, the downtown center bylaw as well. Um, then we have to change the zoning map, so there's, there's some related, it's kinda like an octopus, it's, it's some related issues.
Yeah.
Um, cause we wanna make sure when we're introducing new uses, like a micro brewery, people know what that is, so we've added some definitions under that section. Um, so, it's, uh, but we'll, we'll see what we, what we can achieve over the next month, but basically. Um. You may, you may end up not being able to do the whole thing, I mean, maybe we do two of the ar, the articles and then leave the downtown center for the next one. Um.
I'm kinda getting that sense, that's kinda how I, you know, does the board have any?
Well, I'd hate to see it left to the next one, but if that's the only way to do it, we would. I'd like to get this in as quickly as possible.
Yeah. Well, again, I'll have it drafted up, but I, but it may be a lot for the board to review and the, the public to sort of absorb. You know, but I don't know, we'll, you know, we'll take it, take it one step at a time, but, yeah.
Yeah. I think the best part, like, on the, on the, um, website, on the zoning audit website, I did explain the theory behind. Which sections we're doing, you know, we're kinda focusing on downtown and, and economic development and things, and, you know. And so that at least gets them, you know, puts them in that mindset when they start reading these changes, you know?
Right, right. And there's a lot of stuff that's allowed in the PD, and the PD is, is still downtown until we make it more specific in the DC, so. Still would apply. Okay.
There's only one question I had in regards to the signs.
Oh, I mean, okay.
Yeah, it, it, and you might have covered it, you were going kinda quickly, so I didn't see.
I know.
But the religious, uh, exemptions, you know, that was, uh, the Supreme Court ruled on, I think in about two thousand fourteen.
Fifteen, right.
Put out signs and things, uh, didn't matter, is that covered in that?
Yes, it is, yeah, yeah. It's the, the, the content issue, and we made sure that this was clear, so this is a, a template that I've used a few times since. Uh, since that, that decision by the Supreme Court was made, so it's been vetted by an attorney, so it's okay, great.
Yeah, I think you, nine point two point one. Nothing contained in this article shall be construed as the content-based regulation of sign messaging.
Yeah.
Prohibited by federal or state constitution statutes or court decisions.
Yeah, that's a standard provision now in all the signed bylaws.
Yeah. Perfect.
By, 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 signed by law, so, I got a couple of questions on those two. That's, okay, right, you know, it would have, right, uh, the, uh, let's see. Nine point five point three. Is the signs painted on a building? Uh, if the person leaves the building. That should be taken down. Repainted. And there's, there, there's a, a next, another clause in here further on, I was reading. That said, there's one that for an external sign that's on the clothing, it must be updated to make sure that it doesn't get. Looking like a disaster. You know what I mean?
Yeah. So, they leave, so five point, nine point five point three, make sure they remove it if they leave.
Yeah. That only, you know, you really need a sign on the building, and the building. Is vacant for a while.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion.
No, it makes sense.
And. Another one I have is the, the awning, in here, you say ten feet apart. Well.
Under that, under those sign standards?
Yes, it's on, it's five, uh, right here.
Right here.
Okay. Somewhere here, you say they must be ten feet apart. Uh, right here, this is placement, canopy size must be separated ten feet minimal, uh. Or another, uh, canopy sign. Now, if I remember rightly, and maybe guy, or, uh, or somebody. Where, uh, Fort Val Tax Places, where John Meesha was. The one time John's Meesha had awnings all the way down through that place. The one time John's Miesha had awnings all the way down through that place. Family pharmacy and everything, and they were right side by side. Couldn't possibly put those things ten feet apart.
Okay. Yeah, if it's one continuous canopy, that's one thing. But if there's a side by side businesses that are separate ownership. Yeah, I could see how that could be a problem. Yeah.
That's what this one.
Yeah, if you got a common wall, yeah, that that could be a problem. So let me let me change that.
Yeah, especially that's a great example of that building because there's four, um. Four store.
Separate, yeah, yeah.
And they do.
Yeah, you want to encourage, you want to encourage, you know, them to all have it a money and.
Yeah.
And hopefully that they're distinct from another. I mean, I think.
Correct. Yep.
Liven's up the downtown.
Mm hmm.
Okay, good catch.
I just want to make sure that on the the void and the projected size, that is a thing in here that says, uh. Person must have insurance.
Yeah, right at the bottom, it does.
It does say it on the bottom, but I'm not sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I see it now. Yeah, okay. I I know I read it, but. I've read.
You have?
The last few days.
Do you have a lot of projecting signs in downtown or?
Yeah, they're not allowed right now.
Oh, they're not allowed. Okay, well, you need them.
Yep.
Yeah.
They're great. Make a huge difference.
Now, the, uh. Let me ask you one more question about science. I think I I found that one out anyways. A person that had would say was selling blueberries or something, that would be in that other. Uh, this last section.
Which one now?
It's tax it's tax signs that, uh. Tax signs, which is, uh. You know, with real estate sign and all that is is covered with a, uh. What if somebody was signing up, you know? Uber. Okay.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you less. What?
Okay, I cover I cover the speaker up. The, uh, the, uh, on the signage where it's, uh, weighted signs, I guess it is, uh, where the realty signs are and everything.
Oh, the real, okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, I I lost I lost my page. I can't find it right now. Uh. And. And that's, I think it's.
Oh, I think it's, no, I think it's, uh.
Detach detached signs or something like that. It's something.
Are you thinking temporary?
There we go. It's temporary. It's permanent temporary.
Definitely. That's what.
Yeah.
Okay, that would that fall into something like that? I mean, somebody wanted to had a sign out here for a yard sale or something like that. That's all that would all be covered. They wouldn't have to go get a permit to do that, would they?
Uh, it's permitted, uh, depends what it is. But if it's a real estate sign, it's just permitted by rights. So you could go out there and put it. You wouldn't have to get a permit for that. No.
Right.
No. But if you did a if you did a street banner, well, that's not permitted right now. That that would be something across the street.
Right.
That would be the town that would have to do that. Um, if it's an event banner, that's basically you you need to, uh. It's permitted only for home occupations, churches, schools, related institutions intended for public access.
So would if you were if you were, uh. Have a bad example. But if you were selling blueberries. For example.
Yeah.
Just, you know, you you you're picking blueberries or you're picking your 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 garden, you're picking strawberries or your. Claw or something like that out of your garden. You had a sign out there, you know, con for sale, you know? Five for a dollar or whatever it is, okay? Uh, would that come underneath for, uh, underneath C for, uh, other temporary signs or?
I would put it under B.
Okay.
Yeah, event signs. I would say your your you your your blueberries are right. And you basically put the sign out there, blueberries for sale. If it's a farm stand or there's a farm stand provision in the accessory uses as well.
Right, right. Okay, that's my question. So I'm sorry. I didn't want to take up the time on that, but.
Depends how good the blueberries are though.
Yeah.
Signs can be a hot button issue. So if anybody's got any, uh, comments on this section. I think.
Yeah, signs are always signs are always hot buttons. So.
I think you'll find that these provisions under the D C, which will eventually be our downtown.
Yeah.
Um, they give a lot more, um. Options than we have existing. Um, but they but they still have the downtown. They still have that aesthetic, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Can can we go over electronic wherever you have? Can't remember where I saw that. I just wanted to make sure everybody was happy with. That because I know I know the clerk wants to put a new. Like a monument sign, but but with an electronic.
Lighting, yeah, on the side. Well, this this is something that some people are going to get upset about, I think, because we're really restricting internally lit, you know, plastic signs and. Really want to, you know, we want, you know, externally lit, whether it's coming from the ground up on a on a, you know. Of a pole sign or whether it's a a blade sign. Um, but I think on a monument side, if you're doing lighting that's integrated into the foundation of it in the landscape, I think that's fine. But. Anything that's internally lit. There's not a lot of, you know, leeway for that.
Well, this is going to be a little bit of an issue. And the reason I bring this up is because the town just purchased a. A sign off of a grant, the fire department, and this is a prelit LED sign with a scrolling board on it. So we need to. Try and look at this on a standpoint that now the town has a sign that is now in violation of this regulation.
Right. Well, here's here are the provisions for internal illumination. So nine point six point three. So we should all read this really carefully and make sure that we're not causing issues for everybody.
Yeah. I that's the thing I'd like the board to really, because you know, um, Ken up at the Legion. They've they've, uh, put in, they've wanted a, uh, sign for quite a while that isn't allowed by our zoning. Um, we do know that the harbor has a sign that. Is is a zoning violation and and the town, you know, pursued it and then it just. Um, it wasn't followed through on. So that sign they have now is not technically allowed by our zoning. So, um, this is the area that I really want the the board to think about and. What they want to put forward for the public hearing to get some, um, input.
We were allowing neon signs. I, you know, some people love them, some people don't. I'd love, I was just out one in Seattle and. They're everywhere out west and they're beautiful. Somehow. And there there used to be many in New England too, but, uh, for some reason they sort of lost favor.
Neon signs aren't art now.
They really are. Yeah, yeah. Um. So this is.
I've seen some signs now instead of having scrolling, scrolling it, they're, uh. Putting up like town hall is open today and the next and then that fades off and the next thing comes out says, you know. Nine, you know, nine to five.
Yeah, yeah, that's electric electronic messaging board. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that's in here. Not worth.
I think that's much distracting to that.
Yeah, it it there's, um. Basically, you have to you have to put a limit on the time they can rotate. So you don't want a flashing. You don't want to like change every few seconds. And so you basically. Just you time it. I had to do with some Norwood where they were really up and down Route one, they're getting a lot of these flashing signs. And so they put together an ordinance that said they can only be rotated once every three hours or something like that. So. That makes a big difference.
But that's what we had to do with coming from farms. I mean, it was in seconds, not hours, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll limit to ten or twenty seconds.
Yeah, because once you once it's flashing, basically it's rotating so fast, it essentially looks like it's flashing. It becomes a real nuisance.
Did I see somewhere here also, um. There was something about a temporary like a sign on a. Trailer or something, something.
That's a prohibited sign.
Yeah, and we use that right now. The town uses something like that or.
We use all legal signs.
Yeah, yeah, for for, uh, like, you know, voting today or, you know, like a message.
Oh, the portable message board, yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
I mean.
So, you know, but I think maybe if we allowed more. More signs, we wouldn't, you know, I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that is. I think that's something that the board's going to really have to think about and.
Yeah, that that.
What do they what do they want for the town?
I think, yeah, you have to think about that because you you know, I don't know if you've got a lot of them in town now, but you know, all these things like these feather signs are really popular.
Yeah.
I know at the Ford dealership, if you're getting these air activating graphics.
No.
Um. So, yeah, there'll be people that are, you know, they'll be upset. About some of these prohibited signs.
Yeah. So that's something the board, maybe our next meeting, you can make a.
Yeah.
Make, you know, your first pass that, you know, your first draft on what you want to prohibit and what you want to allow.
Yeah.
And then we go to the townspeople with a public hearing and you get even more input, but, um.
Right, right. Yeah.
Does anybody have anything else?
I hate to say I was going to look over all this stuff last night, but I picked up a bitch of a cold, so. I just got out of bed to come to this meeting, so I haven't really looked at a lot of it.
Um, right now, we don't have anything for the agenda for your next planning board meeting, but I really would like to put zoning. I really think that we we really need to keep moving on this.
Absolutely.
So.
I don't disagree with that.
When's the next meeting, Trish?
Uh, two weeks. Yeah, hang on. It is, uh, March fifteenth at six P M.
Just take a quick look. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right, um. I don't know if, um, anybody has any comments on scheduling, um. Scheduling this, the, um, public hearing. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, I'm in no rush to schedule a public hearing. Can we?
Okay.
Through the next meeting because worst case, uh, we could have the hearing after the war closes. Preferably not, but, you know. We are allowed to have the hearing right up to, uh, town meeting. So I don't think there's any rush.
Yeah, my only thing is I, um. You know, I know we can we can amend things on the on the floor, but it'd be nice to have a solid.
Well, that's why I mean, we get it solid.
Yeah.
You know, rushing it and then have to amend it on the floor. We make sure all get all that ducks in the well and then, uh. Put it on the floor as we like it.
I I believe that we're only going to be able to do one or two, uh. Items like either five, five and nine or just nine or something like that because, uh. I think it's going to be so much for everybody to absorb that they're gonna. I don't want to see it shot down.
Mm hmm. Yeah. And I did, you know, the town manager did ask if we could add a minimum, get article nine, the signs. Because it's been so controversial and there's been a lot going on. And so I've told him, you know, at a minimum, we can get the signs on there. You know, and and in in my opinion is I'd rather do it right, if even if it's not as much. At least what we do move forward with is done the right way.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, um, why don't why don't the board think about that? And then our next meeting, we can really. Make some concrete decisions.
And are we planning on having our next meeting via Zoom?
If. If that's a pleasure of the board.
It depends what we have for agenda. If we have any other things for an agenda, I mean.
Nothing.
Right now, we don't have anything.
Nothing at all. And and we don't have anything. I mean, nothing could be advertised in time at this point, so.
But we could have like an A and R or.
We could, yeah, A and R. I mean, we do have one set of minutes and we'll probably have minutes from this meeting. So at, you know, probably two sets of minutes.
We can always approve those anyways on a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, it's only A and R and the minutes. If there is one.
Yeah.
I would just stick with a Zoom unless we have to physically meet in person for the moment. I just think it's the easiest possible way for me to join lately with everything going on.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so Zoom it is March fifteenth at six P M. I'll send out a link to everybody.
Is six o'clock good? Your regular meeting time or?
Well, we take it to six from six thirty.
Yeah, it I think it'd be good to have a meeting in the evening so that maybe, uh, more townspeople can. Attend and and well.
Give them all a chance.
Yeah, I want to put some, I'm going to put something out on Facebook. You know, so.
It's okay for me. I have no problem.
Does anybody else want to add anything to the zoning?
I'm good.
I just want to thank Ted for all the work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My pleasure.
Very grateful. Very grateful Ted's help.
Glad I could be of service. I'll, um, I'll send out these slides. I'm also going to send you probably tomorrow. Um, I told you I gave you some development case studies of. Downtown redevelopment and, you know, commercial corridors and, uh, some residential stuff. I'll send those out, uh, next day or so. Just to give you some examples of, you know, some other communities that have changed their their. Their bylaws for downtown or for the commercial corridors and some of the things that they're getting now, um, kind of interesting, so.
Yeah, that'd be great. It's it's kind of an exciting time for us, having our downtown redone and things like that. So.
Yeah.
And I like to follow it up some really good sound, um, regulations, so.
Yeah. What, uh, what's happening with the the zoning map? Did you get a hold of?
I I did, and I'm working, I'm probably, I'm probably going to work with M R P C for this.
Okay.
To get it up to date and then I may switch. I I gotta, I gotta work with Jason Stanton at M R P C a little bit longer and then I'll reach out. So, yeah, but thank you for, yeah, I had a great conversation with him, so.
Good, good. It's a good guy.
Yeah, yes.
Well, right, if that if that's it, uh, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Wes made the motion.
I will second it.
Okay, Garrett seconded, uh. Wes Goodrich.
Hi.
Garrett Wand.
Hi.
Uh, Guy Corvusso says, I am.
Art's there.
You're not our mentor. Don't forget about you, Art. You had your name on all those buildings.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
And see you in a couple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bye bye.